Good evening. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on March 2nd, or any March 2nd, 2023. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, literate and just as for all.
So before we get to the agenda this evening, I've been really struggling the past 48 hours, I think this whole community has, with the news that our Lacey icon and legend and good friend to so many of us has passed. I've really actually struggled with even trying to acknowledge this loss to this community. You know, there's this saying that sometimes you don't know what you have until you lose it, which is why it's so important that you remember. And that is why Ken Ballsley, along with myself, we loved history. We loved understanding where we came from, where our community came from, and those who were important that made your community. And Ken Ballsley was Lacey. He was one of the most influential, impactful humans the city has ever seen. And his loss is tremendous. And so I would like to have just a moment of silence in his memory.
Whereas today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Lacey, who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-saving, life-preserving skills through the Red Cross.
Whereas in Lacey, the contributions of the local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires.
Whereas donating essential, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. And whereas the Red Cross sponsors the Heroes Cafe event, held in our own Lacey Veterans Hub, which provides vital resources for veterans as well as active-duty military throughout Thurston County.
Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of founder Clara Barton. Now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby proclaim March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Lacey and encourage all citizens of Lacey to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, this March 2nd. Is Justin here? Don't see him. Well, Justin was going to come and accept this from the Red Cross, but don't see him. But shows up, I'll make sure it gets to him. Next up on our agenda is Resolution 1126, the corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy. Shannon's can take this.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am obviously not Jen Burbage, our Parks Culture and Recreation Director, so I'm doing a little bit of a pinch hitting here for the two items before you this evening. So the first item is to approve the updated sponsorship and naming rights policy, which starts on page 19 of the Agenda Packet. This updated policy provides the city with a more comprehensive and standardized evaluation process for reviewing any and all potential future sponsors. In brief, the updated policy outlines sponsorship eligibility criteria, as well as the types of advertising that is allowed, as well as what is not allowed. The policy establishes a comprehensive procedure for persons proposing to be considered, including the creation of a mandatory sponsorship questionnaire. And just as a reminder, I know this was reviewed previously at a council meeting back in February, on February 16th. Persons are defined in the policy as an individual, a corporation, a limited liability company, or any other legal or commercial entity. Since the last review of the materials, before you tonight, we did make some changes since that February 16th meeting based on council feedback. So if you take a look at the sponsorship questionnaire, which is found on page 38 of the packet, we have updated all of the questions to reflect open-ended questions. So for example, if you take a look at the sponsorship questionnaire, you can see that the first question now reads, "Please describe how your values align with the City of Lacey's mission." And this really was in response to some of the feedback received to allow, you know, persons to be able to talk about what they're doing in the community and how their values and work align. The second item before you tonight is to adopt Resolution Number 1126, which would amend the City Council Policies and Procedure Manual as recommended by the Parks Culture and Recreation Board, as well as the Commission on Equity to align Section 513, naming of public parks, trails, parkways, et cetera, of the manual with the proposed changes in the sponsorship policy. While doing this update, staff believe that it would be advantageous to also take the time to update several outdated references that are in the policy manual. And this is really the change from the Park Board of Commissioners to the Parks Culture and Recreation Board pursuant to ordinance 1634, which this body recently passed. The other change that I did want to highlight tonight is found in the draft agreement between the city and a person that might become a sponsor, based off of, again, council feedback from the last time this was reviewed. We've updated the anti-discrimination language, which now reads that the city has no tolerance for discrimination. I would be certainly happy to answer any questions on the two recommendations tonight, as well as to go over both of the recommendations again.
And I'll just add in real quickly that there's two separate actions with this, and it's going to be necessary for council to take action on the first one before considering the resolution.
Move to approve the updated sponsorship and naming rights policy?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, council member?
Yeah, so I just have one question. You know, this came about and this process got started because of some public input regarding a sponsorship that we had for Children's Day, which was from the local Chick-fil-A restaurant. So I guess my question is, is this policy, and I support the idea of having a process that's the same every time. I think that's great. But if this policy were in effect, would they not have been able to be a sponsor for that event?
So, council member, I think, you know, one thing to really draw it is, this is a tool, again, for the city and staff to be able to evaluate on a more consistent and standardized way. So what I would say is that in creating this tool, it doesn't expressly exclude anybody from going through the process, and it just gives staff the process to be able to do that. And it's really impossible to speculate on a hypothetical application at this point.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So if by chance we do have a potential corporate sponsor, and going through the questionnaire, there were some concerns, and subsequently maybe that corporate sponsor was denied, would the council be made aware of it?
So a couple of things I'd like to highlight about the policy itself, too, is that going through the questionnaire, the Parks Director, so Jen Burbage or designee, does have the ability to take this to Advisory Board members as well if they want to do some additional review, whether it's the Parks Board, or the Commission on Equity, or any other advisory board. So there could be other council connections that would be seeing some policy applications come through it. But as the way the policy is crafted, it doesn't necessarily state that any denial would come before council.
That's interesting. Is there any other discussion? I'm not sure how that sits with me. I think the council should at least be made aware of any denial of a corporate sponsorship. We should at least be given a heads up. I mean, I think through normal practice, it probably would happen. I'm sure Jen would report out that it did. But it's better to have it in policy and practice than the assumption that it's going to happen.
And Mr. Mayor, I guess I would just offer a point of distinction of saying that it was not expressly stated in the policy, but certainly something that we could put together as information that would come before the council in some format.
I would agree. I think that it should be amended to state, in fact, that the council will have the option to review a denied application.
Where's the rest of the council sit on this?
I think it would depend on the level of the sponsorship. If it were, you know, a small thing, I don't think we need to hear every little one, but if it's a naming rights for a major event or a facility, then yeah, I think probably would be good.
Councilman?
I mean, first off, I'm glad that we're putting this policy together so that there's a framework for making the decision, because I think one of the gaffes that we discovered is that we didn't have a way of explaining the way that we make our decisions on sponsorship. And that's what this policy is intended to close that gap. I think I would assume that there's going to be some conversation between the Parks Director and applicants if there's any questions or concerns with the application itself. So I would trust Jen to have those conversations. But it would be nice to have, maybe a heads up, that if an application is ultimately denied after those conversations happen. I don't know that I would need it to be in the policy, but it would be nice to know that that information's going to come to council in some format.
And if I could just make a clarification with, in response to Councilmember Cox's previous comment, any facility or naming right, that's part of the council policies. So that's not what council's considering right now. So there's a distinction there that I just wanted to highlight. That would, that would come before council.
That would come before the council.
Yes, yes.
Ultimately, as a sponsorship. You're absolutely right. That does all.
No, not a sponsorship, but a naming right.
Naming rights.
Sponsorship wouldn't, naming right wouldn't.
Something permanently affixed to a building, facility.
Something permanently affixed to a building, facility, naming right, park, something like that is absolutely the council's discretion.
Councilmember?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, again, I agree with what Robin just said. I think it's really good that we have a policy in place and that there's a standardized way of evaluating potential sponsors. I think that's really good. But I also think that, and I think it'll happen very rarely, that we have a denial. I don't see that as being something that's gonna happen on a regular basis, but I do think if there is a denial, that it should be in policy, that that comes back to this council. I do believe that that would make sense.
Deputy Mayor, what's your thoughts?
It almost sounds as if there needs to be an appeal process if a denial is put in place that would bring that back to the council.
I think we could do this pretty quick with a quick amendment to this policy that says that if an applicant is denied, that it could, would go back to the council for discussion. I mean, I don't know how we'd want to word that.
Well, again, it's an administrative policy. It's outside of the purview of the council historically. I mean, again, this is an amendment. This has been a Parks and Rec policy up until this point.
Forever.
I think, I think it's loud and clear, staff's hearing, that council wants to be advised of any denied sponsorships, or perhaps that could be a city manager update. I don't know.
True.
I think it's more than being advised. I think it's like Deputy Mayor said, more of almost an appeals process, I think, where they could then come to the council.
Yeah. They would always have the option to do that. They're not, I mean, whether it's part of the policy, if someone was denied, of course they could come speak to the council.
Well, come speak to the council, I mean, a public comment, I get that, but I'm saying, but actually an appeal, to where they could actually come to this council seeking a different decision.
I think where I'd be most comfortable is first, you know, getting a heads up that we're gonna deny it, so we're not caught flat-footed if somebody asks us out in the community.
That's really where my head's at, too.
Right. But if there's, I'd rather see an appeal process than have council just, you know, questioning at a public meeting the decision of the Parks and Rec Director. I'd rather, anything that comes to the council be initiated by the person who wants to appeal a decision.
So, yeah, so the decision could be appealed. Looking for some language, how we'd best.
Well, that would not be language I would want to just come up with on the fly. I will tell you that. So if council is not in favor of this particular policy, I would suggest that this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to bring back to council.
My thoughts are, let's get this right. Let's do the work and get this right.
And I'm in agreement with Councilmember Cox. I think you're right. I don't think it should just be, you know, kind of thrown at us. I think in an actual appeal, where the individual or corporation, or whatever it is, who's being denied, has the right to appeal to this body. You know, I think that's reasonable. And again, I think it's, they would obviously have to do some work to change the language, but it could be done, I think, pretty quickly and brought back to us at, you know, another next council meeting or whatever.
Councilmember?
Well, and to Dave's point, I just want us to be thoughtful about setting a precedence where the council reaches down into the administrative function of the city, where we don't normally do that, right? There's a kind of a boundary there where we give guidance on what we want the policy to look like, and then we allow the city administrative staff to do their jobs. So if we do this here, where decisions made by our city staff that are the experts in what they do, is appealable to us, that opens a huge door to a whole bunch of other things that the city staff does for us. And I don't know if I'm ready for those kinds of decisions yet.
And it might be worth considering, this is a sponsorship policy, so we're thinking in terms of companies, individuals, persons that would want to sponsor a city activity. The appeal would likely be from somebody who was not in favor of that sponsor, not a, probably a sponsor that wanted to put forth.
Oh, yeah.
So that's something to consider. That would go both ways. So that certainly, if that's something the council, it's gonna take more.
So what you're talking about is if we, if something was approved, a sponsorship was approved, someone from the public could then come to us to appeal it in the other direction. Had not really thought about that, but that's what you're saying.
See, this is the tricky part, that council member, just why we don't get into the weeds in some of this stuff. We try to set the policy and trust that our great staff makes good decisions, which I know they would on this circumstance. And I feel a little bit better knowing the naming rights, a big thing, that would come in front of this council regardless. Let's see where this vote's at. Are we done with discussion?
Well, I was just gonna suggest, maybe we pass this part of it tonight, and then sit with it for a little bit, and then if we need to amend it, we feel we need to amend it, we do that. But that would give us time to cool off a little bit and think it through. I don't want to put Rick on the spot, but do you have a recommendation on this?
Well, I really don't have too much more to add to the conversation and Dave's and Shannon's comments. You know, just as you consider this policy, it is an administrative program and decision that's going on. And if you do want to have an appeal step, then it should be opened up to any party that's agreed by a decision. And so approving a sponsorship, then it could be appealed. But, you know, then you're looking at, how do you specify that process? And you're getting to be a little bit more sophistication. And again, you can move forward with the action tonight, see how it works, see how the program works. There's a questionnaire in there that helps staff evaluate. And the other part of it, too, and to answer the Councilman Greenstein's earlier question, is there's an opportunity for a, somebody that wants a sponsored event, to explain, in their words, how they meet the various mission statements and policies that they have to meet for compliance with our policy. So there is a way for them to explain, and like the previous situation, now there's a documentation of why that basis decision, so there may be a little bit more information for the public to see why the city made a decision to accept or not accept a sponsorship. So, you know, again, this is a good policy going forward, it's a standardized process, it's a process that's fair and predictable for everybody that's involved. And there'd be also conversations between the Parks Director or their designee to work out any issues.
So your recommendation is to pass it as written?
Yes, my recommendation is to pass it as.
Is there any other discussion? Go ahead.
If I may, Eric?
Sure. Oh, and by the way, Councilmember Stedman's at home, not feeling well. I hope you feel better. Go ahead, Councilmember Stedman.
Yeah, my apologies for not being there. One thing that I haven't heard mentioned is the revenue source, or somebody possibly waiting in line that if there's any delay, we could lose that revenue source. So I'd be in favor, vote in favor of this, and then see how it works and maybe tweak it later.
Okay. Any more discussion?
An approval would mean they've cleared all the conditions of the ordinance itself, but a denial would mean that they didn't. So we probably wouldn't see an approval get, you know, questioned, but a denial, we probably would, so.
Well, if we're talking about denying or approving, what's been pointed out, that we better allow it both ways. And so, the more I've thought about this, and I'm sorry, I'm the one that started this conversation doubting the policy to begin with, but I was really thinking more of like the bigger, bigger things, wanting to have a little bit more of a say there, but.
It's a good start.
I think it's a good start, and I think I'm gonna be voting in favor of it. And if it's not working, we'll readdress it. And I'm sure we'll hear right away if it's not working. Any more discussion?
No.
Then it's been moved and seconded to approve the sponsorship and naming rights policy. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Say aye.
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 All opposed? Then that motion carries. The next up is the Resolution of the 1126, amending the City Council Policies and Procedure Manual as recommended by the Parks and Cultural and Recreation Board and the Commission on Equity. I'll make that motion to approve that recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Well, that was good discussion, and a good reminder, thank you, councilmember. Next up is the Mayor's Report. First up on the Mayor's Report is the appointment of three amazing individuals to our Parks Cultural and Recreation Board, and that's Bill Fosbury, Chris Perazzo, and Hillary Dykstra. We've had three openings for, we've had several openings for a while, and it's been really great to get to know these individuals, and I think they'll be wonderful on our Parks Board. So it's my recommendation that we appoint them to the Parks Cultural and Recreation Board. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Happy to see them on board.
Yep, me, too.
Same, it's exciting.
With that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries, and we have appointed them to the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. The next agenda item is a request to fly the Gold Star flag, and I'm gonna turn this over to councilmember, if you'd like to talk about this.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm proud to say that the end of March, on the 31st, we will have our dedication for the Gold Star Memorial Monument earlier in the day, and in the evening, we're gonna have a gala to help us raise funds and awareness for the Gold Star Memorial Monument. So it is happening. After several years of working and fundraising and trying to make things happen, we're gonna have a monument later this month, and I'm really excited about it. What the Board has asked the council to consider is flying the Gold Star flag in place of the city flag at around the Civic Plaza for the week of Monday, March 27th through Sunday, April 2nd. Being a member of the Gold Star Memorial Board, I'm going to recuse myself, but this will take a vote of the council to amend our flag policy temporarily. For now, this is a one-time ask. I would imagine that the Board in the future may ask for this again, but I'm uncertain.
And all.
Any questions?
If I may?
Go ahead. Go ahead, councilmember.
I'm the acting vice chair, and I also will recuse myself.
And this is, what were the times of the, Monday, March 27th through April?
2nd.
2nd?
Of 2023.
Yeah. And we've obviously had a lot of discussion on our flag policy over the years. Is there a normal policy procedure that this would go through?
So I was gonna step in real quickly. This is not an amendment, this would not be an amendment to the flag policy. The flag policy, as written, allows council, at a regular council meeting, on motion, supported by a majority of those council members present, to specifically authorize the flying of a separate flag in lieu of the city flag for a specific period of time. An amendment would be if the council wanted to make that an annual thing, for any, whether this or some other flag at a different time. So council has full authority pursuant to its own policy to authorize this.
So this would just be a normal motion to approve through our flag policy?
And the motion, if made, would need to articulate the flag, which is the Gold Star flag, and the time and location of where this flag would be flown.
That's 3/27 through?
April 2nd.
Through 4/2.
At Civic Plaza.
At the Civic Plaza.
In lieu of the city flag.
So I would make a motion that we fly the Gold Star Memorial flag from March 27th, '23, to April 2nd, '23, at the Civic Flag Plaza.
Second.
And that's in lieu of the city flag. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, go ahead.
The only comment I'll make is, as everyone on council knows, I was strongly opposed to our current flag policy. This is not an amendment to that, so I won't get into it very much, but I'm gonna support this only because we are allowing other special interest flags. It is still my opinion that we should not be allowing any special interest flags, as we've discussed in the past, but I will definitely be supporting this.
Go ahead, Deputy.
Very excited and proud for the work that you have done, and Councilmember Stedman as well. I've seen the memorial, and we are a community of a lot of veterans, and I want them to feel proud to be here, to live here, and I'm glad that we have this in our community now. And even if we flew it, if we went through this every year, I would vote yes every year.
Yeah, obviously, the work, the Gold Star families deserve the recognition, and this monument, to have made the ultimate sacrifice for this country, deserves that recognition. I wouldn't call that a special interest, by the way, but.
And I would agree there, but there are others that are, that are on our flag policy.
That being said, is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All those sustaining, two suspensions? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep. Now on to the City Manager's Report.
Yes, I have actually, you know, one listed item, but I have two good of the orders I want to share with the council. But first, we'll start off with Public Works Director Scott Agar. He'll present a bid award for the 2023 Mullen Road sewer improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, staff is recommending award of Project PW2023-06 to Miles Resources LLC, an amount of $1,209,708.70. By comparison, the engineer's estimate was $1,314,000. There were nine bidders on the project, so the engineer's estimate fell between the second-place bidder and the third-place bidder. There are 60 working days in this project, and it'll begin this spring. So the project is located on Mullen Road. If you look at the map there, it's east of Carpenter. It's actually between Rosemont Street and Athlebaugh. So the project's pretty simple. There's a four-inch diameter step sewer force main there. We're upsizing that to eight inches. So we'll install the eight inch, abandon the four, there's some other valve work in the area that we're doing, and then we'll repave. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Move to award Lacey Contract Number PW2023-06 to Low Bitter Miles Resources LLC from PLOP Washington, in the amount of $1,209,708.70.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Just real quick, as I was reading this earlier today, Miles gets a lot of work from us.
Yes, they do.
They do.
They're a good company.
They must be. Is there, is there a limit to how many? In my mind, I just think of, you know, the legal ramification, I think of the small things, I don't know why, you know, and they start to bug me, but is there a limit to how many contracts we can have with them?
No, state law requires that we award to the lowest responsible bidder. So if they were the lowest responsible bidder on every project we took out, or put out, we'd award to every bidder.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I know sometimes when we're going to open up the street anyway, we look at any other utilities that might need updating or refreshing. Are we doing any of that here with water, electric, any of that?
No, this is, well, we're replacing a couple of water valves on this project, so yes, we always look at that. We also send out notices to all other utilities, you know, power, gas, communication, to let them know we're gonna have a project.
Want to join the party, yeah.
So, yes, we did look at this, and yeah, just a few water valves, but other than that, it's all sewer.
Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to award PW-2023-06 to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
Aye.
Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Then, one other thing, too, I wanted to highlight this evening is, yesterday, we had our employee recognition luncheon, and the reason why I want to highlight this is because this is the first time we've been able to have this recognition of our staff since prior to the pandemic, and it was really telling, nice to get everybody together, celebrate the work that they all do for the City of Lacey and the community, as well as celebrate the milestones of our, you know, 15, 20, 25, and 30-plus-year employees, and one of them was recognized at 37 years of service to the Lacey community. So I just wanted to highlight that. One of the things also that was really telling is our staff has grown a little bit, but also since the pandemic, probably a third have been, come on board, and that was their first employee recognition event, so that's also pretty. So that's also pretty telling of the changing dynamics of our our workforce. And I also want to thank the council for attending and and participating in that because I know that is very much appreciated by the staff. So thank you to the council for taking the time to recognize the staff. The second thing I want to highlight, too, is this weekend is a big weekend for us. The our Parks Culture and Recreation Department is hosting the Lacey Cultural Celebration. It's this Saturday, March 4. We get from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at St. Martin's Worthington Center. And so this is a great opportunity for the community to go out and attend, and they can listen to music, watch live performances. There's going to be some cooking demonstration of all the various type diversity of culture in our community, and something that's generally well-attended and an exciting event, so I invite the public and everybody else to be able to attend and participate this Saturday.
Great.
That's my report. Thank you. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to that. Obviously, we haven't had it last several couple of years, so it's really nice to get back to it. It's another wonderful free event in the city of Lacey. So next up is Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. I'm up first. It's been a little bit since I've reported out, and so the the Mayor's Forum did meet this last month, and we met right here at in Lacey, and it was the the first time that we've had both the Chair of the Port of Olympia and the Chair of the County Commission present along with the Mayor's Forum. We used to all meet, and then several years ago, we decided, well, we just want the mayors to meet, and then what we've done, we realized is, boy, there's a lot of information, a lot of things happening at both the port and at the county level, and so we've offered them to come back like every even of the month. So, you know, the second and the fourth month, and so on and so forth. So they were attending, and we, you know, it's always good to hear what's going on. There's a lot going on at the Port of Olympia right now, and it was good to have that conversation of how we can continue to partner with the port, and I think all the mayors appreciate having that conversation and getting a heads up on what's going on there. So that's really the majority of what went on at the Mayor's Forum. The Transportation Policy Board, I think some of this has already been, might have been reported out, but we started off our meeting on February 8, and we've actually changed the time on when the Transportation Policy Board meets. Now, this doesn't seem like it's news, but I've been advocating for us to meet a little bit later ever since I've been Chair, because they meet bright and early at 7:00 a.m., and I am not the morning person, and I got to move to 7:30, which I think is like my biggest accomplishment I've I've had there. And so right at 7:30, we were able to meet and talk with Representative Andrew Barkis, who's the on the Transportation Committee for the the House Republicans and has done a lot of great work for for this region. And so we got a really rundown of what's going on on the transportation side going on at the state right now. He's been a great advocate for us, and we really appreciate that time. We also got a we elected our Chairs, Vice Chair and our Chair, our first Vice Chair, and our our second Vice Chair, and I once again was appointed to be the Chair of the Transportation Policy Board, and I think this is my 12th year as the Chair of the Transportation Policy Board, which is hard for me to wrap my head around. But Danny Madrone from Olympia was voting for Vice Chair, and Rene Radcliffe Sinclair is the second Vice Chair, and so we're all returning to that that leadership role. Then we had a presentation of the school walk school walking route maps, which is available at trpc.org. This is a long-going project. I'm sure it's been reported out. And we also had a a federal transportation update from the head lobbyist from the National League of Cities. As this council knows, I've been really involved with with NLC, and I was on their Transportation Committee for many years, and we had a really rundown of the the new federal transportation package that's has been passed and is is gives us a lot of opportunities for grants that we didn't have in the past direct to cities, and specifically when jurisdictions partner with other jurisdictions to do bigger projects. And so we we really wanted to hear straight from someone who helped helped craft some of that legislation, who is a big advocate on behalf of cities and towns, and I think we got a really good update and on how, as a region, we could best position ourselves to go after some of these grants that we haven't seen before. So that is my report. Next up is the Deputy Mayor.
I have one report. The EDC met, and we we met down in Tomwater. We it we had two city managers with us in attendance going over the homelessness response, and it it collectively, we we got to see, you know, just how much we're really doing about homelessness, and it was it had almost turned into dueling city managers to see who is doing the most in in response to homelessness. But there are multiple projects and a lot of dollars being spent to eradicate the homelessness problem. I hesitate to call it that, but there's many shelter beds on the way. There's several Unity Commons Phase Two, which is 65 new units the day's in. Olympia has several units going up. There are it it almost seems as if, well, it doesn't seem as if, but, you know, we we've decided that we need to have a regional approach to homelessness, and we've decided that as as multiple jurisdictions got together and had these meetings, and that decision, that path forward is starting to yield some really good results. And so by the end of this year and going into next year, we will see multiple projects come online, and we will see our our state roadways starting to get cleaned up, cleared up, all as part of what we've collectively decided as jurisdictions to do together. So very exciting meeting because we got to see what everybody is doing individually and what we're doing together as a group. The next board meeting is scheduled for March 22, and for that one, we will be going to Cedar Restaurant in Grand Mound, and that is my report.
Right. Councilmember Cox.
Just one report this week. The Climate Action Steering Committee met on February 27. We are continuing work on updating the interlocal agreement. The updates would give jurisdictions more local control while allowing for collaboration on larger regional issues that are more than an individual jurisdiction can handle on its own. And just this week, Grant Beck and Hounds Shepherd from the planning staff gave an overview to our council's Land Use and Environment Committee, and the ILA should be coming before council in April or May. We also approved an extension of the 2022 Work Program through June to allow for work to continue until this new interlocal agreement is adopted by the jurisdictions. Part of the reason for that is the Steering Committee had been meeting monthly, and that's going to be slowed to quarterly once this new interlocal jurisdiction is approved. And we will have a more active technical committee and a Citizens Advisory Committee. They're doing meeting more frequently and will literally be, you know, feeding information and recommendations into the Steering Committee, which will be more of a policy-setting board, kind of like city council is. We also reviewed the 2022 Annual Report, and we're seeing progress in some sectors, not so much in others. The bottom line is we're behind on meeting carbon reduction goals. They noted that we're starting to see carbon emissions rebound after COVID, but the good news is that they're still below pre-pandemic levels. Increased staff capacity, including Lacey's soon-to-be-hired new climate coordinator, is going to enable better coordination on regional projects. We also reviewed a white paper on carbon sequestration, which is a natural process for removing carbon from the atmosphere and storing it in soil, shrubs, plants, and the ocean. Thurston County's existing forests and prairies can sequester 927,000 metric tons of carbon a year, but to actually meet have that, do what we want to do, is going to be a heavy lift. So now that we have more carbon carbon monitoring data, the Steering Committee is going to kind of reevaluate its reduction targets and strategies to make sure that if, for example, carbon sequestration isn't going to do what we hoped it would do, how we can make up for that in its other carbon reduction activities. And I sent each of you a copy of this annual report that's got a lot of good data in it about what's been accomplished so far, and I thought I had sent it Monday. I found it in my drafts folder today, so you should have gotten it about 5:00 o'clock today. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein.
Just one short report tonight. Thurston T-COM 911 met yesterday, and just a couple of things to report out on. Clearly, we're still working. A great deal of the effort of staff is still being put into the TCERN project, the new radio project. There have been a few holdups. We don't necessarily anticipate that it'll delay beyond that mid-24 range of when we anticipate going live, but we've we're struggling with some of the permitting. There's one new tower site as part of this project, and it's it's actually in Thurston County next to, I think it's Fire Station 81, I want to say. That that process has been in process for that permit for about two years, and it is still in the process of permitting. So that delay is is creating some problems because we do have the equipment ready to install, just don't have the permits to do it. We are still running about eight telecommunicators short of being fully staffed. We have several upcoming academies to hopefully fill those gaps, and the goal is, by end of this year, to be fully staffed at 911, so. And we did make that actually a major part of the executive director's goals for this year, because it's it's critical. We just we can't continue on with short on staff and having mandatory overtime and all of that. It just it can't go on that way forever. And then the last thing was, I was reelected as Chair of T-COM, and Leada Delhoff from Tomwater was reelected as Vice Chair. And that is my report.
Great. Councilmember Stedman, I'm not sure if you have a report.
No report.
Okay. Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have two, one for VCB and then SWAC. VCB met on the 21st of February. Highlight of the meeting was to discuss and approve our 2023 Business and Marketing Plan as well as building the foundation for our Destination Management Task Force. We also reviewed our Accommodation Scorecard for December. Occupancy rate was down almost 2% compared to 2019, but our web visits for Experience Olympia and metrics for our social media are up significantly. We are getting a lot of feedback and a lot of metrics online with local tourism, so that's promising. Sales for sports meetings, sports and meetings, excuse me, exceeded expectations. A few of the contributors to the uptick included the High School Golf Championship and the USSA National Fast Pitch Championship. For SWAC, we met yesterday. It was a very long meeting. Had our Capital Facilities Project Update. There were no significant changes since my last report. We had several presentations, including Recycling and Waste Reduction Program, highlighting a very successful Master Recycler Composter Volunteer Program and Master Gardener Program. Between the two, there were almost 200 volunteers who committed over 17,000 volunteer hours for those two programs. Environmental Health Education Program highlights the outreach and public education pertaining to the mitigation of hazardous waste, and we had a presentation on the Solid and Hazardous Waste Program, highlighting management of solid and hazardous waste, and updates on the compost procurement ordinance, which is still a work in progress. A lot of these reports I have shared with the council just previously, so if you want to look at that, I encourage you to do so. That's my report.
Great. And before we close this meeting, I want to give the opportunity to.
You want to hear Councilmember Raskwitz?
Oh, sorry. I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, it's okay.
You are important. Yeah, I appreciate you. You are important.
I'm here. I just have one report.
Great.
And it's InterCity Transit Authority met yesterday and gave an update on the Martinway Park and Ride Direct Access Project, which is very exciting because for folks that ride the bus from the Martinway Park and Ride, a lot of times during busy hours, it's difficult for the bus to get in and out of the park and ride because there's two lanes of traffic that block the driveway. And so we're in the midst of a project that is going to alleviate that issue and speed up bus service. So we had a report on that. It's continuing on. InterCity Transit is hiring, so honestly, if any of you know of anyone who's looking for a job, they're trying to fill their coach-operator positions to attain the levels of service that the community said they wanted when they voted for Proposition 1 a couple of years ago, and they haven't been able to get enough drivers to staff the buses, or we'd be having a better, we'd have more bus service. So if you know anybody looking for a job, send them to InterCity Transit. Also, big news, Anne Manzanares Freeman, who has been the Executive Director of InterCity Transit Authority for quite some time, is retiring.
Wow.
Her last day will be March 31, and some tears were shed, some nice words were said at the meeting because she has made a tremendous impact on our transit in Thurston County. And so as she's departing, the Board made the decision to identify Emily Bergkamp, who's the Operations Assistant Director, I believe, to step in as the interim director while they search for a permanent replacement for Anne. And my background in human resources comes in handy. Again, I was invited to serve on the selection committee, so I'll be stepping up on that committee, as well as Justin Belk and a couple other folks. There are four of us. So we have about eight months is what we're planning on for trying to identify Anne's successor. But if you've worked with Anne, you know the tremendous impact she's had, so say some nice words to her before she goes to spend more time with her family. That's my report.
Great.
Those are some big shoes to fill.
Well, before we close this meeting, I just want to give Justin for the American Red Cross to come up here and accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you. Sorry that you're up there. Sure, thank you so much. Sorry that I was late. I was told 6:30, so I thought I was actually like 20 minutes early, but clearly I was not, so I'm sorry.
We were just real quick.
But yeah, just super thankful on behalf of the American Red Cross. I know you guys did this last year as well, at least the years that I've been on the Board, so the willingness to make it, you know, official with the proclamation again during Red Cross Month here in March, and most people know like the Red Cross does a lot of work, you know, with big, you know, national natural disasters, things happen, like that's what they're most known for, you know, I feel like when it comes to hurricanes and tornadoes and that kind of stuff. But the vast majority of the work that's done is done, and it's all volunteer-based at the local level, whether it be home fires or getting disaster action teams together to help provide, you know, in the immediate aftermath of a disaster, clothing, shelter, mental health resources, those kinds of things when people go through stuff, blood donation, as well as, you know, here being so closely tied to the military, a lot of work done on on when people, soldiers, airmen, whoever need to get home when they have something happen overseas. I mean, the Red Cross is who organizes that and helps get them home when they're deployed and have, you know, a death in the family or whatever it may be they need to get back for. So just super thankful for the willingness of you guys to to recognize Red Cross Month in March, and if you're, you know, willing to donate blood or set up a blood drive, those are always appreciated. And yeah, and as a local, you know, business owner and and member of the the community here, just just really appreciate being able to represent Thurston County on the South Puget Sound Olympics Board and and your guys' willingness to do this. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you.
Quick question before you go. Are you, is there still a critical blood shortage?
here, just, just really appreciate being able to represent Thurston County on the South Puget Sound Olympics Board and, and your guys' willingness to do this. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you.
Quick question before you go. Are you, is there still a critical blood shortage?
Yes, sir. As far as I know, there is still, yeah, critical blood shortage going on. So I know that, that pretty much every monthly meeting we have, they're, one of the main things is trying to really get, recruit people to try and find ways to, to do blood drives or, you know, give blood if, if, if you're able, so, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering with them. Well, that reaches us to the end of our agenda, but I'm not going to close this without putting this out there. I thank you for the moment of silence for, for Ken Ballsley at the beginning of this My head's been spinning, obviously, for, for a while now, but he would yell at me if I didn't take this moment to talk about the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center. This was something that Ken has been passionate about from the day we proposed it. And long before then, we need a new museum and cultural center specifically for so much of the work that he has done in this community, from the Lacey leader onto the years and years that he's been involved, the, as, here at the city of Lacey, on art boards and commissions. It is so important that we get the museum built. We have a plan, we have a funding strategy, we, we need to make it a priority. And I know it's, it's a priority, but I would just be remiss if I didn't bring it up here because you all know, every time Ken saw you, he would say, we have to get it built. And so now more than ever, we need to make it a priority as this council to get it built. It would be a disservice if I didn't say that before I closed this meeting.
His usual comment would be, build my museum, is what he usually said.
And there's a lot to be said about that because a large majority of the items that we have in our museum, it came from Ken Ballsley. He was a massive contributor. We wouldn't have probably, you know, a quarter of the stuff that we have in our museum if it wasn't for Ken Ballsley. So yes, we need to build his museum and cultural center. So with that, you keep it classy, Lacey. Objection. I'll call this meeting adjourned.